The July 12, 2021 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. At this time, the chair recognizes Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
Let us pray. My gracious heaven and father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can meet for our July 12 Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. Be with us tonight as we review the four cases being presented to us. Give us the knowledge and skills to make decisions that will be beneficial to the requesting parties and also for the people of our county. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Let the record show that a quorum is present for this meeting. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, Planning Board adopts the agenda. The next item on the menu is approval of the minutes, and we have decided to push that to the section of Old Business. The next item on the agenda is the public hearings. First case will involve a rezoning. The following are the procedures for this Planning Board for rezoning cases. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding this case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the Board Chairman. Each case will be presented to the Board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the Board regarding the application. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the Board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After the public comment period is completed, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. At this time, we call upon staff to brief us on case number 2021-15, zoning map amendment.
Presentation set up here. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. They've worked on the sound system. It's working a lot better than it used to.
If I may, this is Mr. Lynn Cochran.
I was gonna get to that, but thank you. Well, I'm trying to extend my display, and it's not wanting to let me do it. There we go. Okay. Sorry, I had to click the right side of buttons. Good evening. My name's Lynn Cochran. I am a planning consultant here with Rockingham County, currently a one-man show, but we're working on getting some more staff on. So case number one is a request for a zoning map amendment, a rezoning. Mr. Ladonte Bowler, owner of a parcel, has requested an amendment to rezone his parcel from residential protected to residential agricultural. You can see the tax pin here. The address is 8210 Friendship Church Road. This is a straight rezoning, otherwise known as an unconditional rezoning request. This is a little change-up in the way that we view the maps. Hopefully, it'll make it a little more streamlined, a little more informational for you guys. I see now I'm gonna have to change the colors for the city outlines. They're a little dim. But the large gray area is the approximate, you know, spot of where this request is coming from. This is the zoning map that shows the parcel highlighted in purple. Those parcels surrounding it, highlighted in green, are residential agricultural. The ones that appear sort of white and yellow are residential protected. So you can see that the area is a general mix of both. There's a little bit of residential mixed towards the eastern end of the map that you see here. This is simply an aerial that shows the water features. There is Candy Creek that runs close to this parcel and the flood zone associated with it. It does not affect this parcel. And lastly, this is a new type of map that I've been including in the packets that shows the parcel itself in the context of the new future land use map for the county. This is extracted from the land use plan that was approved by the Board of Commissioners May 10 of this year. This area shaded in green is known as G1 low-density. So it's primarily meant for low-density residential uses. However, there is encouragement in the land use plan to cluster residential and limited commercial development around rural crossroads. You'll see a small purple dot there at the intersection of 29 Cornelius and Candy Creek. That is sort of a neighborhood nexus as defined by the new land use plan. So surrounding this nexus, we should see a mix of low-density residential uses and limiting commercial uses. These are some excerpts from the new land use plan regarding this area and how it intersects with the requested proposal. The transect essentially refers to how the area is structured in the new land use plan, but it's basically the G1 low-density area. They're located near these strategic intersections, as mentioned. These areas should generally be zoned residential agricultural. This comes from the zoning ordinance implications on page 48 of the land use plan. Also, under goals for this area, we should encourage residential development to be located in areas surrounding existing rural crossroads, as identified on the future land use map. And I did not have a chance to fit on here the last quote that is actually in your packet that encourages a diversity of housing options across the county. That's from page 88. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone might have.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran from the Board?
You're good to go, Lynn. Okay, very good. I'm not sure if Mr. Bowler is here and would like to speak. He does not have to, of course, but again, in considering this, keep in mind that you have to consider all aspects of both the residential protected district and the residential agricultural district. Essentially, the applicant is simply looking to take advantage of the opportunities that are available in the RA district versus the RP district. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We have one speaker signed up. It's Angelo Dupree Roberson. Here. Ma'am, would you please come forward to the podium? For the record, please state your name and address.
Angelo Dupree Roberson, 471 Cornelius Road.
Is it that you'd like the Planning Board to know?
When I talked to Mr. Cochran on Friday, we had a little conversation about Mr. Bowler just wanting to do residential there. I did a little research, and he happens to be a dog breeder. And one of the things that you can do in RA versus RP is a kennel of eight or less domestic animals or eight or more domesticated animals. And I just wanted to make sure that this was covered under one of those things that if he decides to do that, there will be some additional scrutiny or application that goes on.
Yes, there would be.
Okay. That's what I needed. Thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome. Oh, wait, hold on. Any questions for Mrs. Roberson? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
The chair recognizes Julie Talbert.
The Planning Board has reviewed the residential agricultural zoning amendment and adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 160D. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plan, the Planning Board recommends approval of case number 2021-15. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan. This zoning amendment supports the intent and descriptions of G1 low-density growth land class. The Board considers its action in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the proposed use is an appropriate use for the land, considering its effect on the entire community as a social, economic, and political unit. The size of the parcel is appropriate for the district requested. The property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and residential protected. The Board considers its action in adopting the zoning amendment to be in the public's interest because the proposed development has sufficient design features so as to be compatible with or exceed the quality of existing developments in the neighborhood. The uses permitted in the residential agricultural district would have similar impacts as the surrounding residentially zoned properties. This would not impose significant harm on the neighbors and surrounding community. The proposed rezoning is designed to meet or exceed all requirements and goals of the existing UDO and the comprehensive plan, and on balance, the following factors: the size of the tract in question, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community, and the relationship between the envisioned permitted use and uses currently present in adjacent tracks weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment. And the only additional comment I would like to include is that all other requirements for all the uses available will be followed by the owner.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion has been made and seconded to approve the rezoning request. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the application to rezone this parcel of land from residential protected to residential agricultural is approved. For the benefit of the audience, please understand that when we approve a zoning request like this, it serves as a recommendation to the county commissioners. The final decision on the rezoning rests with them. So this Board will be recommending approval.
The tentative hearing date for the Board of Commissioners meeting for this recommendation will be August 20.
August 20. Okay. The next three cases on the agenda are what are described as quasi-judicial in nature. So this hearing is a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing. That means it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this Board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. The Board's discretion is limited. The Board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi-judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is the decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference, speculation, or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public. Everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the Board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this Board needs to hear opinion testimony only from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony. At this time, Mr. Cochran, if you'll present us with the second case on the agenda. Special use permit for 1317 McCoy Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second case this evening is special use permit case 2021-13. An applicant has been submitted by Angela and Keith Martin, a request to operate a travel trailer RV park. This is the indication of where this special use permit is located, in the current development ordinance, tax pin, address, and the township where located. Following, even though on this screen it's a bit small, is the site plan that's been submitted by the applicants. This was drawn up by Obie Chambers, a drafter and land surveyor, that meets the requirements of the site plan submission and application. If you'll notice, it includes 11 RV park sites and an open recreation area. The applicants can explain in more detail the plans for the open area. It also shows the contour lines, the proposed areas for wastewater management, and other facilities. Lastly, it also shows the required 50-foot riparian buffer around Lake Reedsville that must remain undisturbed according to the rules of the watershed ordinance. The lane is just proposed at this point as an entrance and exit point. The applicants have ample room for the necessary width for the driveway. The next is just a vicinity map that shows the general area. Of course, it overlaps Lake Reedsville, but lets you know about where it's located. This is the zoning of the surrounding parcels. It shows the Reedsville ETJ. The lake itself, it falls within the jurisdiction of the city of Reedsville. The parcel itself falls within the jurisdiction of the county. The next is just a simple aerial map showing the parcel in relation to the lake and other land features nearby. The last is the future land use map. This map, there's a slight correction at the top. Initially, had it as conserved land. O2 is designated as reserved land. These are essentially lands that are an in-between class. They're not necessarily a growth-controlled area, but they're not conserved lands. Conserved lands would be those items such as a protected forest, a conservation easement, voluntary agricultural district. Those will show up as conserved lands. Reserved land is essentially meant to maintain its rural character with minimal development, low-density housing, agricultural uses, and other uses that would be appropriate for the area. Nearby, very close by, is the edge of a low-density G1 class. This plan is strongly supported by the economic vision of the Rockingham Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Goal three, of which there are multiple points, is to promote sustainable tourism development that improves the quality of life for residents and preserves the natural and cultural resources of the county. Goal 3.6 specifically says to encourage investment in new outdoor recreation amenities, visitor attractions, destinations, ecotourism opportunities, and outdoor recreation infrastructure. This recommendation, coming from the economic development portion of the land use plan, applies to all land classes in the county. With that, I'll be glad to entertain any questions anyone might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cochran?
I have a few questions. Okay, so the first question is, how close would be the closest dwelling to, say, the first travel trailer?
There is a residence that is located on the larger parcel. The plan designates about five areas. This is not a survey line. They're not surveying off the parcel. It's just a proposed boundary line. The total acreage of the parcel is about 16 acres, and there is a house located there. There is a group of residences. If you see that dot in the purple striped area, that's the closest residence. The next closest residences would be across the street on the one parcel that has an address dot, and those parcels that are zoned RP just below that.
Does the applicant own the house in the purple striped area?
Yes. The lot and the home are all owned by the applicant. And just to add, there is no provision in the ordinance that states that a residence cannot exist on a RV park campsite. Those items are not incompatible.
So on the riparian buffer, it looks like the septic tank and pump are pretty close to that. Has there been a survey from that department to make sure that you all have looked at it to make sure that it's in the right place and will be of no harm to the water, right?
Yes, environmental health has been consulted about this plan. They have state guidelines that are statewide that regard septic and well systems within Level 3 watersheds, both protected and critical areas. This will be located a minimum distance away from any waterways to ensure compliance with state law. I was assured that by the Director of Environmental Health Services this morning.
Okay, and as far as the water, this property bordering the water, could there ever be an access to the water from this property?
Not from county permission. The lake is owned by the city, and at this point, they do not allow any private parcel holders to install boat docks. So I can't say ever. Perhaps someone else can testify to that, but at this point, no.
Okay. That's my question.
The chair recognizes Chloe Scott.
So across the street on McCoy Road is an entry point for the lake where you can, in fact, there's a sign that says, here's where you can go put in your kayak or whatever, right across the street.
That's a fairly new access point that's been established by the city of Reedsville, and the applicants are aware of that.
The chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
Thank you, sir. Lynn, just to piggyback on a question that Julie had about the riparian buffer, and I think you said that this is the minimum?
50 feet is the minimum riparian buffer that's required by the ordinance.
And are there, I'm sure there are, but just to be clear, are there processes in place that will go back and make sure? Are they checked? Or is it, I'm sure it's permitted?
Yes, a development like this, as progress moves along, is checked and permitted. There'll be different stages at which zoning goes out to check and different stages at which building inspections will also go out. We will go out to inspect the new road as it's been installed, and as part of that, we will also check the general site area and the buffer to make sure it's being maintained.
Okay, thank you.
The gravel driveway only has a 15-foot width. The UDO requires 20 for two-way traffic.
It will be 20. Does it say 15 on there? I'm sorry, it's so small, I can't see it on mine. If it does, then we can request it.
At the very end, it says 15 feet.
Okay, then we will have to request a site plan amendment for that. I think that would be a good suggestion in consideration to add the condition that the site plan is corrected to show the 20-foot driveway for two-way traffic. If that's the complete plan, I will let the owner testify. This might be a plan for a one-way drive. I'll let the owner testify.
Also, emergency fire vehicles, they usually request a turnaround of 50 feet.
They do, and that's something.
Looks like there's enough land to do that.
There is enough land to do that, and any private drive, even though it's not depicted on the site plan, any private drive established in Rockingham County must have at least a cul-de-sac turnaround, or what we call a T or half-T or hammer turnaround to allow for emergency vehicle access. That's another site plan amendment that we should add.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Cochran? The chair recognizes James Harris.
Couple of prints back on the screen.
Oh, the other way.
Yeah. Okay, right there where the purple stripe prompt is at.
Yes.
What about access to that pie-shaped RA?
It's not in the same ownership. That is a different owner. I believe that hasn't, I'll let the owner testify about access to that.
Any kind of easement?
I believe so, but I'll let the owner confirm that, yes.
Maybe it's a boat-only access, James. Any other questions for Mr. Cochran? So many papers here. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant. Is Mr. Martin present? Please come up to the podium. And if you would, sir, please place your left hand on the Bible up there and raise your right hand. Is there one up there? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, if you would now, please stand in front of the podium and recite your name and address for the record.
My name is Keith Martin. My address is 7290 NC Highway 65, Summerfield.
And what is it that you'd like the Planning Board to know about your application?
I was wanting to request a special use permit 2021-13 for a travel trailer park and campground on the property associated with 1317 McCoy Road, Simpsonville Township.
And is the site plan you've submitted pretty much what you're asking for?
Yes.
The 11 spaces?
It's just a preliminary, but it's close.
Okay. Would you care to comment on our request that you have a 20-foot wide driveway for two-way traffic?
Actually, it is already a 20-foot wide. I don't know where that mistake come in at, but it is 20-foot, if not more.
And can you provide a 50-foot turnaround for emergency vehicles?
Yes, and actually, we have been, I've discussed with Obie Chambers the other day about putting a whole circle road in, so it'll be one way in, one way out.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Martin? Are there any other questions for Mr. Martin?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Chair recognizes Matt Cardwell.
Mr. Martin, looking at the lot, it looks like it's fairly wooded. Are you going to be retaining as much of that as you can to, you know, to help provide a little bit of seclusion for it, or are you going to do much clearing, or what's your plan for that?
Well, we are going to clear off about three acres total, but my plan is to have a buffer at the McCoy Road where you really can't see it, some kind of landscaping, and I think that'll be adequate enough.
Okay, all right.
Someone asked a while ago about that lot in the corner back there. That's my, that's my property also.
Yeah, going back to the clearing, you've got to have enough clearing to keep trees from, from, of course, if they were to fall, hit one of the travel trailers or whatnot. So, yeah, I just wondered if you were going to try to keep it a little bit secluded and landscape. Okay.
That a 25-foot vegetated buffer is required on all sides that abut residential parcels. It's depicted here, that's a minimum. In addition, you're right, this lot is fairly wooded at this point. If the applicant chooses to amend the site plan to a one-way drive as a circle, it would only need the minimum of 12 feet. In either case, the site plan will be corrected to reflect what's going to be on the ground.
Okay, I guess I can still ask some questions based on reading this. Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Chair recognizes Julie Talbrough.
Mr. Martin, can you give us some sort of specifics about exactly what this property is going to be used for? If you can list out some of the things that you envision this property doing, that would be helpful.
Well, this park will have 11 sites with full hookup and internet access. There will be no primitive camping, RVs only. They'll be able, campers can rent by day, week, or month.
What, and how many persons at peak capacity do you anticipate inhabiting the property at any given time? What's your capacity?
I don't think I have any regulation zone capacity, do I?
Yeah, and, but you as, you as an owner can, can limit it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm just sort of, what is your vision, and I'm trying to get at?
11.
Yeah.
I would say maximum 11 times. Seventy-seven people, max.
Okay. Also, there are limitations on how long people can rent, so you're, you're saying by the weekday or month. Do you, is, what will you market this to be, more, a little more long-term, or just like overnight trips, or things like that?
Long-term.
Okay.
The special use permit text itself states only that spaces shall be rented by the day. It does not give a minimum, nor does it provide a maximum. That might be something as a condition that could be considered, but we would have to do so carefully because the new 160D legislation has specifically stated that any condition placed on a special use permit must be one that the county can impose otherwise. And in some cases, we do have time limitations on special use permits. I would ask if it gets close to that for maybe John to give some, some input on that.
Yeah, I know that we've heard cases where there, you can have short-term, you can't just pull your trailer in and live on it, live in it long-term, so that's, that's where I'm going with this.
Historically, you are correct. Historically, there are campgrounds in different parts of the county where that has occurred, that people do end up living long-term. Those were campgrounds that were permitted years ago under very different rules and very different ordinances. This special use permit is specifically only for RVs, or had they chosen tent camping, they've chosen not to do that, and specifically states that it shall be rented by the day. Rented by the day could be for seven days, it could be for 30 days. If the board would like to consider a time limit, maximum for rental time, that would be something to discuss with the applicant to see what condition might be agreed upon with the input of council. Does that help?
Yeah, Mr. Martin, would you be opposed to any kind of, like, time limitations?
No, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
The recreation area that you have listed here, that's a requirement, but what, what is your, what is your vision for the recreation area? Is it just going to be flat, grassed area, or what, what would that look like?
Well, it will be a flat, grassy area, but we're also planning on the recreation area having picnic tables, a basketball court, horseshoes, and a walking trail.
All right, thank you. That's my questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin? Chair recognizes Cory Scott.
Is there going to be any restriction of the type of RVs, meaning, you know, some, some RV parks say that they have to be new, or they can't be more than 10 years old, they have to be a certain limit in terms of size? Are you intending to allow up to 40-foot RVs in there, or is that?
Yes.
Okay, so there's not going to be a limit on that?
No.
One of the other advantages of RV parks is, is dump tanks, you know, and so you're going to, you're going to have full hookups. Are you going to have a dump site also for people to, you know, dump their tanks before they leave the RV park?
Well, they have access to, each site has a hookup for sewage, so they can dump right there if they need to, in their spot.
So, there's not any attempt to try to provide, you know, if somebody has an RV parked at their house and they need to go dump the tanks before they go on a trip or something like that, they can't go here and, and pull in, pull through and dump their tanks at that point?
No, they're, I guess we'd have to rent a spot and dump.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You can sit down. I have a lot of people signed up in opposition to this application, and I want to caution you before you, I call names and you come up and speak, if you're going to talk on the same subject and, and object for the same reason, for example, that this is going to affect your property values, we don't want to listen to eight or nine people in a row come up and tell us that. So, if, if that was what you want to speak about when your name is called, just agree that the person that preceded you spoke what you wanted to say, and we'll let it go with that. If, if you have some unique objection, then by all means, we want to hear it. And we ask that you be as brief as possible because there's a lot of people on these lists. That being said, we'll call Cynthia Langston. Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matter at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? All right, please return to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cynthia Langston. I live at 1882 Penrose Drive. I'm here representing my parents, Roy and Nancy Langston, who live at 205 Jonesland Trail. Their property borders the property that's being discussed this evening.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
So, I actually have a question. It's in regards to the fact that the RV individuals will be coming onto the property and could possibly be bringing canoes and kayaks, and I do realize that there is a place across the road to utilize that. So, would they then be allowed to cross the street carrying canoes and kayaks across McCoy Road, which is 55 miles per hour in that area? So, I am concerned about the safety.
Well, I would assume that they will be because it's the only way to get to the-
That is correct.
To the access. I took a ride out to that area yesterday, and you're right, it's 55 miles an hour, but I didn't discern a lot of traffic in the time I was there. I was there 15, 20 minutes maybe, and I probably saw six cars go by.
As a avid kayaker, I can tell you that most people would not want to carry a boat across a road. They're heavy, and it's just not, you, you really do want to pull up as close to the access as possible, and if the access is across the road, then more than likely will drive across the road, whether it's just a few feet or not.
Correct, and so if the only vehicle they have is an RV, I don't see them driving across the road and being able to park over there. My concern simply is for safety in regards to this. I also want to make sure that those who are staying in the RV park would understand that they are not allowed to fish or gain any type of access to Lake Readsville where they would be staying in the RV park.
Well, since the city of Readsville owns the water, I would think that they'd probably ask the applicant to post some kind of sign to that effect.
Okay.
I also took a look at the Readsville city-owned park yesterday, and they've got signs, similar type signs up in the, where the campers are prohibiting swimming and fishing and hunting, and I forget what else was on the sign, but-
Okay.
They, they may mandate that he do it, I don't know.
Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome.
Kill Gareth.
Yes, that's what I said, Kill Gareth, Kill Gareth. If that's you, come on down.
That's me.
And if you would, put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Michael Kilgariff, and I reside at 210 Penntail Road. Lynn, could you put up the map showing the adjacent properties again, please, if you don't mind?
Would you like the sort of simple zoning map look, or do you want the aerial photography?
That would be fine, the purple.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll, if you'll look, I own the property directly across the street that actually parallels Penntail Drive going into Penntail. I own both of those two pieces of property, as well as five other pieces of property comprising a little over 50 some odd acres in that area. So, I'm a very concerned steward of the land, as it were. I've got some questions actually for you, Mr. Chairman. I saw the sign, got the letter, and then started doing my research, didn't want to come up here and ask a number of repeated questions. The lady before us had a very good point. If you've ever been into Penntail, which you may not have-
No, I didn't go in there.
And if you're going to make a left coming out of Penntail onto McCoy, you have to do it very fast. It's a 55 mile an hour road.
Oh, yeah.
There's a blind hill to your right as you're coming out, and the vehicles don't slow down. So, unless you've got a car that accelerates a whole lot, you need to be very careful pulling out of there. I can only see a couple kids trying to pull a kayak getting halfway through there, and somebody coming over that hill isn't going to have a whole lot of time to slow down. The only place that they can recreate, aside from playing cornhole, or horseshoes, or if there's a basketball court in that RV park, is across the street. I own property that abuts that property across the street. And some of the things that I had questions for, for you on was, my research shows that there are six, including the next one coming up will be seven, RV parks in Rockingham County over the past two years, request for RV parks. I had no idea we were the epicenter for recrea, recreating. I mean, I, I understand you want to attract the halfbacks, the individuals leaving north, going south, and moving halfway back, I get that, but is there a limit to the number of parks that you're going to approve? The county? The board? I mean, have you guys even discussed, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, have y'all discussed the number of parks that is commensurate with the county?
The only discussions we've had along those lines have to do with the land use plan, which the commissioners recently approved. Now, the, excuse me, the land use plan is a product of the combining of two land use statutes in North Carolina. Prior to the effective date of the latest one, which is January 1st, 2021, land use in this state was governed by North Carolina General Statute 153A and 160A. Some of the provisions in those statutes dated back to just after the Civil War. So, over a period of two and a half years, the General Assembly, along with the help of the North Carolina State Bar and the Bar Association lawyers, got together and consolidated those two statutes into one, which is now North Carolina's General Statute 160D. When they did so, this mandated that all towns, cities, and counties rewrite their land use plans and their unified development ordinance. Thus far, the land use plan was revised and approved in May, was it, Lynn?
The commissioners approved it May 10th, 2021.
The unified development ordinance is on schedule to be approved next week at Monday's The land use plan also received input from developers, people involved in the tourism industry, and so on and so forth. I mean, there was a battery of people that contributed to this 218-page document, and the document, language in the document encourages tourism. So, you might see more travel trailer parks. It's, it's, it's a, it's a growing industry, and the county is anxious to participate in the revenue that those industries can generate.
Yes, I get it.
So, have we discussed that specific item somewhere along the line of the effort that this board put into the land use plan, along with the county commissioners, in a joint effort? Yes, it probably was discussed. I don't remember the exact conversations, but-
And I've only, and I know you want to limit the time, and I'm going to try to be as brief as I possibly can. Term of stay, we, we touched on that slightly, and we said that it was going to be a daily rental, and that that daily rental could be for a day, for a week, a weekend, and/or a month. However, however, you're probably aware of the park, the RV park, that's just west of the nudist colony on 158, that has 17 mailboxes. Wilson Properties, I think it is, in the RV park, they have 17 mailboxes, they have permanent addresses, they can vote, they can declare where they live their permanent home of residence. Now, that's something that's exceptionally objectionable to me with me paying the property tax on 50 some odd acres, seven separate properties, with, you know, with individuals that can come in, basically set up shop, gypsies, or whatever you want to call them. In Ireland, they call them travelers.
Yeah.
If, if, if there's nothing in the ordinance, you simply have you asking him not to do it, him agreeing not to do it. There's no teeth, you have no teeth in the- You have no teeth in the two-page, actually page-and-a-half document that you've set up to say, these are the requirements for an RV park. Got five acres of tractor, and you can drag, got five acres of tractor, you can drag a 20-foot right-of-way in there, put four inches gravel down, declare it an RV park, have at it. You got a pump station, great, have at it. I mean, you've got an eight-page document that identifies what you can and can't do in a trailer park. I mean, it's very specific. I'd like to, I'd like to ask you, if I can, can you guys consider putting some teeth into your...
Well, he's bound by the terms of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Yeah, that says a daily rental. It does not give a term of stay. Read it. It doesn't give a term of stay. Someone can stay as long as they pay. There is no term. Lynn, is there a term?
I'll defer to the chairman.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, there is no term. I've read it over and over and over. There's no term of stay. No term of stay.
Well...
There's additionally, additionally, excuse me.
I'm trying to answer your question, or your concern. This board has the authority to impose conditions.
I asked that you do so.
And I don't remember the applicant saying that the people were going to be staying there permanently, and I certainly don't remember them saying that they'd be walking around without any clothes on, so I don't think that's going to be an issue.
No, no, no. No. That's the one down 158. That's already here. That's already done and gone. That's done and gone. I'll invite you when they do. My concern is that mailboxes be set up, that individuals would then be allowed to declare permanent residence, and then obviously have voting rights in the county as well. But what you're saying is that you guys, you, are committing to us tonight that you will put additional teeth into the recreational vehicle document, saying that it will have a duration, or a time, or a limit of time, that an individual or entity can stay at one continuous time in that park? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
After we, after we listen to all the testimony, there'll be a discussion amongst the board here in front of you people, and you, we'll address those issues among ourselves and before we make a motion to vote.
And the only thing I'd say is that, you know, Shakespeare had it right. A rose by any other name smell a sweet. Thank you.
Hold on a second. Are there any questions for this gentleman, for any members of the board?
I have a couple of questions.
You're not getting off the hook that easy?
No, I was trying to. As long as you don't ask me to pronounce your last name, we're in good shape.
Smith.
Smith. You did good with mine.
Sheriff, can you, do you live at 210 Penn Tail Road? Can you, which side of that is yours, is your home?
Yes, ma'am. If, it's kind of convoluted, but do you see the small block that says RA?
Yes.
With a dot?
Yes.
Okay. That is in the center of the other properties. I own the property north of that. I own the property to the west of that, to the east of that, to the south of that, to the southeast of that, and the southwest of that. I also own both the properties coming into Penn Tail.
Okay. And which one of those properties do you actually reside on?
The small, the smallest, the smaller one.
Okay. So that means that you're actually, you're across the street from the new boat access, correct?
Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am.
That the city put in?
No, I think you, I think you got me confused.
He's just, he's just down from it.
Okay. Got it. Okay. And how long have you been at this residence?
I own the property. I bought it from Ed Harlow approximately three years ago.
Okay, so you've been there, you've lived there for three years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, go.
No. Teresa Scoble. If you would, please place your left hand, and there you go. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matter at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. For the record, please state your name and address.
Councilwoman Teresa Scoble, Readsville City Council, 230 West Morehead Street, I'm sorry, West Market, Morehead Street, Readsville, North Carolina.
Okay. And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know? First, before we start, are you here as a councilperson?
Yes, sir.
You're representing the voice of the council?
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to thank the chairman and the planning board for the opportunity that you've given us to voice our concerns regarding this development. The city of Readsville has concerns regarding the close proximity of the septic pump stations to the Lake Readsville, as Lake Readsville is our primary water source. It appears on the map that the septic system is less than 100 feet, and I hear tonight that it's actually 50 feet from the water access point. We also have concerns with the proposed riparian 50-foot buffer and the runoff into the lake or around the lake. We have to deal with that around the entire lake, even when we don't have people that are living there or residential areas. So we're extremely concerned about people that may come in to stay on a temporary basis that do not have the concerns that a citizen would have that live their, their whole life or for longer periods of time. We also want to make sure that there is never any implied lake access to anybody there, because that won't happen. You know, we have our Lake Readsville, which is pretty much a lot of the same things that this gentleman would like to offer, but they don't have like lake access other than fishing off of our piers or boat access. But there is no swimming. You know, no one, no one around the lake can have a boat and pull up to the water's edge and get out and walk up to their home. That's just not possible. So we just want to make sure that you understand our concerns, because Lake Readsville is so important to every citizen in Readsville and some county residents, because their drinking water comes from here.
Well, ma'am, I got to tell you, I, I went to the Readsville City Park yesterday, and a lot of the campers, there's 47 lots there, enough for 47 motorhomes. They range in depth from 25 to 40 feet. And if you look at the back line of those campers, they are within, they're up 50 feet from the water. You, you're observing a 50-foot buffer there.
And we do control that. We have, we have, the difference is, we have the opportunity to control that and to monitor it, but we wouldn't in this case.
Well, that'd be up to the owners of the RV park to enforce the restrictions, which would be between you and them.
We're just asking you to take this into consideration before that goes to city council or before your city council passes it. It is a concern of ours, and we feel very strong about it, and we appreciate you here and our side of it.
Are there any questions for...
I have questions. Mrs. Scoble, bearing in mind that there are hundreds of properties bordering Lake Readsville, how many issues have you had in the past with residents and/or guests and/or people on others' property accessing the lake?
It has been few, but when it has come to our attention, we have addressed it immediately.
What is, is there a legal recourse if the shoreline is violated, and what do you do in those instances?
Well, personally, I cannot answer that, but I'm sure that our city manager and our mayor would address it with the state on what our recourse would be and how we would go about it.
If we were to approve this, and the, what would be the requirements for the, for the landowner to maintain security from the, from the city's perspective, being as it does border your property with, with the drinking water of the city of Readsville? What, what would that person have to do, or any, any resident around there? What is their obligation to keep that shoreline secure?
Well, the city would discuss it with them in depth about what their obligation would be and how we would go about monitoring that. Every, every section would probably be a little bit different according to the size of it and exactly what's going on. But, you know, we have our public works department, we have our, our development department. We would make sure that they understand what their obligation is, and we would explain to them what our obligation would be.
And where does your jurisdiction lie with, with regards to the lake shore? Do you have jurisdiction whether the, whether the shore of the lake is inside the city limits or outside the city limits?
We have jurisdiction for that riparian buffer. You know, I mean, a lot of the land around the lake, the city actually owns, but the majority of it, we do not own.
So the 50-foot riparian buffer is actually owned by the city? Or is it within the city's jurisdiction?
It's within our jurisdiction.
Okay.
Not correct. The, as far as I understand it, the water body itself is the jurisdiction of Readsville, for sure.
Yes.
But the portion of the riparian buffer that would accompany this parcel and any other parcel around there is the property and the jurisdiction of the county, as long as it's not within the city's ETJ, as far as zoning jurisdiction and watershed jurisdictions go. And we're highly aware of the sensitivity of the water situation, and we'll be following all the necessary rules and controls for appropriate disposal of wastewater and erosion control. Any development will have to meet all permits that are necessary from both us and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for land disturbance.
And possible access violation?
For an access violation, that, we don't have the power to enforce that. The city of Readsville does, and that is clearly, I hope, something now that the property owners understand. We had discussed that before in our meeting, that the lake is the ETJ, the property, the zoning jurisdiction and watershed jurisdiction of properties that they own. But they understand that lake access is not part of their site plan.
Thank you for that correction. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have questions, Chair?
Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth first. Hold on, James.
Just a point of clarification, maybe, and not necessarily to the city council member. Is this complaint-driven? In other words, you don't have any, they have enforcement if the lakeshore is breached, but unless someone calls whomever is in charge, then it's pretty much a complaint-driven process. Is that correct? If you don't hear about it, then you're not, you're not patrolling or watching, so it's pretty much every person for themselves. And if you hear a complaint, then you go out and investigate. Is that correct?
In short, yes, that is correct. Anything and everything in the county that is often brought to our attention that might be a violation of one ordinance or another is almost always complaint-driven, and that's the state model. I would love to have 500 code enforcement officers to enforce every single parcel in this county, and 100 zoning officers, but we have two of them and one of me right now. So, and that's usually the case. I mean, I'm sure that Readsville understands they have limited code enforcement capabilities, too.
The only point of that was if, if, if people, if citizens think that it's being monitored...
Right.
And that you can't, and that's every municipality that I've ever been in, it is complaint-driven, and it's brought to the attention.
That is the case with the county also.
That's correct. We do not have anyone that patrols the lake, but if someone brings it to our attention, we will address it immediately.
Chair recognizes Mr. James Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Scoble, you mentioned about the runoff earlier with one of the city's concerns. Has the city that you're aware of reached out to Mr. Martin and had any discussions about your concerns?
To my knowledge, we have not, but that is, we do plan to do that, and I will talk with Mr. Martin tonight.
All right. And considering to piggyback off of what you duly mentioned earlier, with so many other residents around the lake, whether you get calls for or complaints about any kind of breaches, I guess it would be implied to me, anyway, that if something occurred on his property, had we, if we choose to go forward, that you all would reach out to Mr. Martin and, and...
Yes, sir. We would reach out to him, and we would work together to make sure it was corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Settler. If you would, please. There you go. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. And for the record, please state your name and address.
I am Donna Settler. My husband and I own and reside at 251 Penn Tail Drive, Readsville.
Okay. And what is it that you want the planning board to know?
Certainly. I wanted to speak to you, you know, as a quad judicial hearing, that you've got to go through your four findings of fact and make sure that the applicant complies with those. So I want to go through some of them with you tonight, as far as my perspective of them. Okay? The first one, of course, is that use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, or general, and general welfare. Well, I offer that this property or this development does not do, does not promote any of those. As far as the general health, I will point out that, as you know, there have been others that have spoke to it. The septic distribution box or the, the dump station and the septic tank itself is all within 100 feet of the lake. Anyone can make a mistake in offloading their, their black water, okay? I know he said, the applicant said that they were going to be, have different stations, but his site plan does not show that tonight. It only shows the one dump station on the site plan. Does not show individual hookups at the site, at the 11 sites that he plans, okay? So I do want to, want to point that out. This is definitely a health concern for both the residents around there, and obviously also it would be for the city of Readsville and the, the individuals that get their water, their drinking water from the lake and even down river, down Ha River, further down.
Okay. If I can interrupt you for one second. The applicant did make it clear at the plant's preliminary.
That's fine, but I, if you'll let me continue on, I will address what the, the findings of fact say, so that will maybe clear some of that up. Okay? As far as safety, a couple of years ago, within the last couple of years, we have had two wrecks at, actually, we've had four, but two specifically at the location of Penn Tail and McCoy Road, just south of that, around the dangerous curve that was spoke of a few minutes ago. We have had two vehicles, one that has ended up in a yard on one side, the other has ended up in the woods on the other side, and that one in particular, one actually did catch on fire. All due for speeding along this area. And that someone said they went out there. You can see what a long stretch that is, and they definitely like to pick up speed going in both directions at that particular location. Entering, and this was also spoke of, I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat it, I apologize, but leaving McCoy, leaving Penn Tail and pulling onto McCoy Road, you have definitely got to be looking toward the curve. And the access to, to the site or to the development is just below that, and the, you know, a travel trailer pulling in or a camper pulling in or pulling out, definitely cannot do that at the speed of a vehicle can, trying to get out of that area. So I do say this is a dangerous spot to be pulling in and out vehicles itself. I agree. City of Readsville, of course, has... I agree, city of Reedsville, of course, has, has built a small Blue Way access across the street. It will hold about three vehicles over there. I'm sure that anybody that is at this park would like to go over and access that, but there is nowhere to added, had an RV to pull over there, that you can't even, you couldn't get it turned around. So if they were to access it, they would have to carry their kayaks across the street and walk down the, walk down McCoy Road roughly about 200 feet. That is an unsafe situation with the, with the traffic coming up and down McCoy Road. As far as the general welfare of our subdivision, Duck Woods, it is a quiet, private residential district, residential area. It does not access any other subdivisions or any other roads. You pull in there, you are going to that subdivision or to someone in there. It is logical that this would be the location that if someone wanted to go walking or to go, you know, most of these people, most with RVs have golf carts with them, most of them maybe even have bikes, so they're going to end up in our Duck, in our subdivision. We would like to continue to keep this subdivision as a nice, quiet location. So just want to bring that out to you. Also, park management. What kind of park management? Is there going to be any management on site at this location? That has not been, so if there is an accident or a spill or whatever, how is that going to be handled and what kind of park management is actually going to be out there? Going on to finding the fact two, or B, the use and development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all other applicable, excuse me, regulations. This is in the troublesome creek watershed. It is in the critical watershed. Nowhere on the site plan does he address the watershed requirements, nor is there any calculations on the site plan itself. And it does say, if you vote for it tonight, if you agree that he does comply with this, says that you're agreeing that he does, and right now, he does not. There is no, no calculate, as I said, there's no calculations or it's not addressed at all on this particular place. This is a state mandated requirement from both, for both counties and municipalities. Discussing the minimal area. It says in your, in the county's guidelines for special use permit, it states that the front yard depth shall be 50 feet. I question whether the recreational area and the first, first homes or the first RV units are actually 50 foot off of the front property line. I tried to scale it the best I could, but with what we were provided, we could, I could not do so. But I do question it, just looking at the other measurements that are on the actual site plan itself. Another requirement of the special use permit is the green belt. The requires a 25-foot natural foliage along the street and the adjoining property owners. On the site plan that you have for you, that 25-foot is actually in the McCoy Road NC DOT right away. It is not on his property. So if NC DOT came through there and took out that 25 foliage, there would be no, no green belt in the front of this property. So, so that also does not comply with the ordinance itself. Other things that I looked at when I was looking at the, the site plan itself, it also said that, of course, that the site plan would show all the structures, and he spoke that it does not tonight, doesn't show the structures. It does not show, it also, in the requirement says that your site, the site plan will show all the structures within 500 feet of the development. It does not do that. Site plan does not do that. This was spoke of a little bit. The very top of your requirement states travel, travel trailer parks or recreational non-permanent vehicles, including tenting and other forms of weather-protected cover and camping. There is no condition offered by the applicant or recommended by the staff to be placed on it at this time. I know that y'all can add conditions to the special use permit, but there is no condition saying that there would not be this type of camp, the camping, tent camping or ERTs or anything else that comes up now with the new camping styles that we have. So, just wanted to bring that out to you. So I offer that this plan does not meet the requirements of your ordinance at, at this time. Going on, that the use and development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and enhance the value of the contiguous property or that the use is a necessity. I hope we'll all agree that this, this use is not a necessity at this location, okay? The homes in Duck Woods, in our Duck Woods subdivision, is between, their value per the Rockingham County taxes between 200 and 400 and, excuse me, 200 and 420,000. Do not believe that placing an RV park across the street, the, from a development that has houses of values like this is going to enhance. It says enhance or maintain. Do not feel that it will enhance or maintain the value of our dwellings and our property within the Duck Woods. I'll also just point out, in addition to that, when we get ready to resell our property, I'll just give you an example. Somebody's looking in our subdivision with an RV park across the street, somebody looking at another subdivision with a comparable house in it somewhere else with no RV park across the street. Which one do you think they're going to choose? It's probably, most likely not going to be the one with RV park in front of it. So I offer that to you tonight. The use or develop, going on to the last one, is that use or development conforms to the general plans for the land use and development of, for, of Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter and in the Rockingham County Development Guidelines. On the staff report, it includes, it says, of course, that it, it meets the economic development goal number three. Promote sustainable tourism development that improves the quality of life for residents and preserves the natural and cultural resources of this county. This development does not promote the quality of life of the citizens that already exist in the Duck Woods subdivision. And with how it's laid out today with this site plan, it does not preserve the natural resources, the, I mean, the septic tanks and all is, is definitely a concern for us. I will say that I go up and down US 158 quite a bit. I have family in Kernersville. By coincidence, the RV park out there got my attention. I spoke to your previous planner, Harry, and she said they had pulled a permit out there a short while back. So I've been keeping an eye on it because I thought it was strange, me quite frankly. But these homes are the same homes that have been there for months. They are not short-term. This is a situation where it is a cheap way to have a manufactured home park. I know we're calling it an RV park, but they have made, just like the other gentleman said, they have made this their permanent home out there and not in permanent homes, okay? Their own homes with wheels. I'll also point out one, one of the last things to you. On your site plan, you've got the larger lot and you've also got the smaller lot. If you will look at your site plan, your site plan includes that smaller lot, and it was not advertised in, in the information that we received. It was, the only pin number that was provided was for that larger lot, but if you look at your site plan, it includes both the larger lot and the smaller patch, pos-shaped lot There is a, a lake warden at Lake Reedsville. He does monitor the areas around Lake Reedsville. Would also be very concerned about running runoff from this particular property.
Ma'am, we've already addressed these issues, and in the interest of time, I'm going to have to ask you to please conclude.
I'll be glad, child. Then I'll only ask one more thing then. I would ask for everyone here tonight that is in opposition, even though they're not going to speak, I know a lot of them are not because they don't want to get up here, but I'm going to ask them to get up and stand, please. Thank you very, very much for your time, and I'll be glad to answer questions.
Any questions for Ms. Settler? Chair recognizes James Fink.
There's been a couple of others that have addressed the, the issue with the roads and the safety of pulling out of, of your access to your subdivision. To the best of your knowledge, has anybody talked to DOT about directing some signs, some type of warning signs?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
See one in the back that says he has, so. So I'm guessing that DOT is aware of that situation, given there's been accidents out there, I would think they would be as well. As far as the speeding, as you mentioned earlier, has anybody that you're aware of contacted the sheriff's department?
Yes, we've called quite a few times about that, mhm. But honestly, you know, by the time they get out there, they're, they're long gone, you know?
And you also mentioned the parking at the, at the new kayak put-in spot, that there's been three, maybe four places there.
That's correct.
I, I agree with Julie, Ms. Talbert, what she said earlier, that, you know, most folks aren't going to carry it across the road also kayak with my boys, and we never carry them except coming out of the back of the trailer into the lake. So I, I don't think that would be an issue of anybody carrying it across the road, not to say it wouldn't happen, but more than likely, most reasonable people are going to go over and park and pull them out and get in the water from there. You did mention the property tax. I do take issue with that because the chairman read in the beginning that, you know, unless you're an expert, you really don't have any kind of righteous opinion about what the tax rates will do. You can speculate, but I, I don't give that a lot of credence. But my whole point here is, is all the points that you brought up, the applicant has no control over. The accidents, that's something that had to be worked out with DOT, and I'm sure with the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, that would be input as far as the, the remaining approval goes, and as far as the parking at the kayak put-in spot, again, he can't control that. He's just concerned about his property and what he wants to do by right with what he owns. So that's, that's my point, and thank you for your time.
Well, I, he's here to get a special use permit, so his use is not by right. His use by right would actually be to possibly looking at doing some single-family houses over there, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are the rest of the people in opposition pretty much in line with what's been said so far? Is there anyone that has anything unusually different to add that's not been said? Sir, are you on the list?
Yes.
And your name is?
Bruce McCall.
Okay, Bruce. Hold on one second, please. Okay, if you would, please, remove your hat too, if you don't mind. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you would now, please give us your name and address.
Yes, Bruce McCall and I reside at 132 Mallard Court, which is directly across from the new kayak launch in very clear proximity to the property that's in question.
Okay, and what new evidence do you wish the board to have?
I would like to submit that when people are purchasing, and I've only lived there for four years, three or four years, so when a purchase decision is made, they do look at the surrounding area. I used to live in an airport, at an airport, I chose there, and people objected because there was airplane noise. Well, hey, you chose to live there, okay? I now live at 132 Mallard Court because it's a nice, quiet, secluded area, and I'm within 1,000 feet of, of this proposed area, which is going to be recreational. So my point, my question, and, and I guess request of the board, is that y'all consider what in Texas we call the slippery slope. By the gentleman's presentation today, he, and, and, could I ask one question? How, how, how large is the purple area in total?
It's just shy of 16 acres.
Just 15.9 acres. 15, 15.9 acres, 15.9, okay.
Yes, sir.
And here's, here's the point, 15.9 acres. The gentleman indicated that he'll probably clear about three acres, and that he'll probably have about 11 sites, and that it'll probably be only about 77 people. I live on a property that's not quite three acres, almost, and if I had 77 people at my house, I think people would start to call the cops, much less if they brought their RV, okay? Now, that's just the three acres. What about the other nine? If you extrapolate, you can add, what, four times that? So now what are we talking about? So my only concern is that all of the people that have made the points on it's not rural, it's not low-density, it's not commercial, it's, enhance the, improve the quality of life, water access, sewer, I agree with all that stuff, and I was going to make those points, but the big thing is it's a slippery slope. And this gentleman, I'm sure he has good intentions, but he lives in Summersville, and I live across the street from a trailer park, or from an RV park, excuse me, from a RV park, and I just don't think that they, that the board has considered all of those ramifications. The last point is that there was no regulation on capacity, and has already been mentioned there's no regulation on term, so I think I, I'll take an RV over there and rent it by the day, and I'll probably ask for 300 and, or I'm sorry, 3,568 days. That's what's going to happen. That's called a slippery slope. It sounds neat, 11 little things, a little horseshoe, a little recreation, but the slippery slope is there, and I just request that the board strongly look at that, consider it, all the ramifications, because we're not just talking about today, we're talking about the next 10 to 15 years. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions rather for?
I have a question.
Chair recognizes James Harris.
I think it's supposed to be 11 sites in this, you're making comparisons right here about the people living in these 11 sites. Why would they be any different than the people living in 11 sites in the community where you live?
Because they didn't pay $400,000 for their site.
I know, but they're human, and they're living, and I'm sure they'd be controlling themselves for their livelihood and taking care of their property as well as I'm sure you do too.
Right, and the definition of recreation is what you don't do when you're at home and you don't do when you're at work?
Do you have any recreation in your community?
I have, I have taken an RV to a recreational vehicle park, yes, sir, I have.
I'm talking about where you live now.
I do not, no.
Nope, no children playing or whatever in your community?
Uh, no, sir.
That's unusual.
Quiet neighborhood, that's why it's called Duck Woods. You have are tree frogs.
Julie.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. McCall, if the map, the, the map that you're looking at, can you see it there?
My eyesight's not very good, but I have a good idea of where I am, yes, ma'am.
Like, it should be right in front of you.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Yes, ma'am.
So you live on, is it Mallard Court?
Yes, ma'am, Mallard Court 132. It's the, if you look at the purple area across McCoy, across the water, and you'll see that first cul-de-sac?
Yes.
I'm the RA between the cul-de-sac and McCoy Road.
Okay, so.
I can see, I will be able to see that. Right now, we can enjoy this foliage. In the wintertime, all that foliage is gone, and in the wintertime, that foliage is gone. And a 50-foot buffer is about the distance from the chairman to where I was sitting.
So, you live within eyesight of McCoy Road?
Uh, eyesight, ear sight, and every other sight, yes, ma'am. We hear the kayakers, we hear the stories, we hear the jokes, we hear what kind of bait the fishermen are using. We hear, we hear all of that, and to multiply that times 77, I just would ask the board to consider that that's not really the purpose of rural and low-density.
So when, when the kayak access was put in, you didn't have a problem with that?
I didn't know about it until after it happened. I was not notified.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have a problem with it because you can't, there's only three parking spots, and as, and I have a kayak, I have two kayaks, and I agree with... and I have a kayak, I have two kayaks, and I agree with what the board said, that people are not going to haul a kayak across the street, unless, of course, that's the only place they can go, because they're on recreation, and that's what they want to do, they want to ride their bike, they want to ride their dirt bike, they want to take walks, and they want to kayak, they're gonna do it, and that's the slippery slope, ladies and gentlemen. I just, unless you want to build an overpass or an underpass, or give them a special access that they can go right to the water from where they are, and I don't think you want to grant that.
All right, thank you, sir. We do have a couple of people in the audience that have signed up supporting, oh, I guess it's, is Sandy Brady here? Yes, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you would, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Sandy Brady, my address is 972 Church Street Extension, Reedsville, North Carolina.
And what is it that you would like the board to know?
I'd like to address the board, just tell them that I support this RV park, I think that it would be a wonderful addition to Rockingham County. I actually grew up being able to hunt and fish around the area right there, own that Martin property, actually grew up going on Ed Harlow's property, which is now Duck Woods, know every square inch of it over there, and it does play a special part to me growing up, I've been a resident of Reedsville since I was born. I think that it's great to be able to have people from out of state, other towns, to be able to come here, and I do realize that there's other RV parks to do it, but all those RV parks are pretty large, this one's only 11 sites. It would be somewhat similar to Duck Woods, kind of quiet, a good place to get away. One thing that I did learn tonight that might need to be addressed, surprised that it hasn't already been addressed because of the problem that's been proposed by the folks from Duck Woods, is the speeding problem on that road, it might be a really good time to address that to the DOT. Whether there's an RV park or not, it sounds like there's a great need for it, so I'm very surprised that hadn't already been addressed at this point in time. Can I address Mr. Cochran, can I ask him some questions?
Sure.
Mr. Cochran, is there anything in your finding on this preliminary plan that prevents the usage of an RV park, the way that it's been proposed, on this preliminary plan that you can find?
No, sir, that's why I, as a staff member, recommended approval of the request for the special use permit, again, this is a preliminary plan, and as always with any special use permit, the board has quite a bit of leeway in imposing conditions if they feel it's necessary to further ensure the four points that Mrs. Settler pointed out.
On a preliminary plan, it's preliminary, so therefore, the easement, the right-of-way, the buffer zones, all of that can be addressed, and they will be not only by Rockingham County, but under North Carolina guidelines and laws, is that correct?
Correct, they, everything that we do as a county, and anyone that does as a city as far as zoning jurisdiction, is granted and enabled by the state, so they lay out the framework for what a special use permit is, and what requirements can be, they lay out rules for zoning and map amendments and things like that. So we interpret those to fit our needs and our desires for the county as far as development, and we match that with the goals of the land use plan, as I mentioned in my presentation. So yes, in short, something like a buffer required is adopted and adapted from state guidance, like a 50-foot vegetative buffer around riparian areas, something like the 25-foot vegetative border on other aspects of the parcel is a requirement specifically of the county. So there's a mix of both.
Okay, thank you very much. One last question, I used to work with several large grading contractors all over the state of North Carolina, we have done lots of work around corve engineers and other lakes, and water quality issues that come up right there, on every single parcel that we ever worked on, around a lake or an area, it always seemed that we were inspected, and we should be, much more so than a normal residential site. So I would expect that Rockingham County would certainly take the time and the effort to go and to inspect that being around Reedsville City Lake, to make sure that everything on the final plan, not this preliminary plan, but on the final plan, would be done to all state and county guidelines underwater quality and erosion control.
That's correct, and that will be done in conjunction with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, especially if land clearance and development exceeds one acre, they will have to issue a permit, and sedimentation and control plan will have to be submitted to them for clearing of anything greater than one acre.
Thank you. The last thing I would like to add is, through my discussions with the property owner who's proposed for this permit, there's absolutely no intention that I have found whatsoever for any of this to be a permanent site for people to come and live on, this is for RV recreation, for people to come and enjoy Rockingham County. His family has owned this site and this land for a long, long time, and now he wants to do something with it. So I think it would be a good addition for Rockingham County, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that's in opposition that has something different? Yes, sir, what is your name?
Larry Patterson.
Okay, I've got you on the list here, Mr. Patterson. Please come up and avail yourself of the Bible there. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Larry G. Patterson, on the list, I reside at 151 Wood Duck Court, somewhat across the lake from the point, if you see 151 there, across from the access point currently.
What is it that you want the planning board to know that hasn't already been said?
And I've lived there for just over three years, I guess, and like Mr. McCall, fairly new resident, we moved into that area because it was a nice, quiet neighborhood. I have a, I was doing some research, because at this point, at the point, I saw this information, I did not know how many sites were going to be there, and I don't know how many sites will be there eventually, currently, we find out now, there are going to be 11 sites. I was looking at RV trailer park development, and if you'll let me read something here, that at a lot of times, RV park, in other words, this is to make a RV park profitable, and they are very profitable ventures, in many cases, for what I've been able to ascertain. A lot of times, RV park visitors come with their families, obviously, they would, so they will be looking for activities the whole family can get involved in. With that in mind, you may need to include swimming pools, go-kart tracks, laser tag games, and the like in your plan. Think about that, don't know where it's going.
That's speculation, sir, that's all speculating on what he's going to do with the property.
I understand that, my question there is, if that eventually does go to that, back to the slippery slope, it says, "Some parks include play areas for children," he's obviously including that, "and off-leash areas for dogs and whatnot." I understand that, I understand all those issues. If they decide to have music events at the park on a regular basis, is there any provision for any sort of sound barriers, sound screening, to prevent loud noises from penetrating our neighborhood? I was sitting in my backyard, July the 4th, or July, the night of July the 3rd, with the fireworks, we had a number of cars, probably 10 or 15 cars, on the bridge at McCoy Road. It was pretty loud, and I mean, as Mr. McCall mentioned, the noise in that valley there just reverberates, it goes, it bounces off the walls, I mean, there's nowhere for it to go, except off the water. My other key point that I wanted to bring up is, perhaps you can answer this question, what fresh water supply is going to be provided, or is going to be feeding water to the park? I would assume, since there, to my assumption, there is no piped-in water, that there's going to be wells, either one large well or multiple wells there, fresh water demand. I asked that question because I have a well on my land, on my lot there, and his Hall Well Plumbing informed me about three months ago, when I was having issues with water problems, he says, "Your well has limited water supply, basically, it's dry, it, they dug the well originally, I have limited flow. If there is a major demand, fresh water demand, just across the road there, is it going to hit my underground water stream or aquifer, even as close as I am to the lake, I have a well problem?" And they informed me that there's little I can do there, are they going to tap into my water supply and cause me additional problems to having to drill another well? I don't know that, that's just something I want to throw out there for your consideration. A number of the points that I'd already made, folks have already made point of, whether it's Mr. McCall or Mr. Kilgariff, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, though.
Thank you, sir.
Move along, members, because we're.
Well, can you answer that question about what kind of fresh water supply they're going to handle?
I don't know, sir, I can't answer your question right now. Well, we're going to call Mr. Martin back up here for rebuttal of all the remarks that have been made, and perhaps we can answer that question.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Mr. Martin, you have an opportunity now to offer rebuttal for all the arguments against your going ahead with this RV park, this is your opportunity to answer the concerns of the citizens that are, feel that they're going to be suffering some kind of damages as a result of what you intend.
Well, the first thing is, I have no intentions of letting anyone have a, living there long-term permanently, that will not happen, and that's the main thing, I believe, that everyone's concerned about. He was just talking about the water, actually, my grandfather, the house is on the land right there, his, he supplied the whole mobile home park back when it was in, running orders for 25 years, from his well that hit an amount of water that they couldn't even register, it was so much, so there's water access there, so that's no problem.
Some of the other concerns that were expressed concern the landscape buffers and the riparian buffers, that I assume you will address in the final site plan?
Yes, sir.
And if you just say right there, is this going to be a site plan that'll have to be submitted to the TRC?
No, development of the scale is not reviewed by the TRC.
So if we want to make sure that, that he does certain things, we can, we need to write that in as a condition? Okay.
Above and beyond what's required in the special use permit itself, all the extra points that have been mentioned.
Can I ask him a question?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, the Councilwoman Scoble brought up a couple of salient points here that I just want to make sure that either you're aware of, or that you would be willing to work with, and that is absolutely keeping access to that lake off limits, is there, have you considered that, have you, are you willing to work with the city of Reedsville, even though you're outside city limits, to address those issues?
Yes, and we had discussed that when a customer fills out an application, that they will sign something that we have wrote up, telling them they're not allowed within 50 foot of the water.
So you're actually going, people will have to give you advance information and application, almost like Airbnb, before you'll allow them on the property?
Correct.
Like, for example, you will, even if the site is capacity for 77, you can say, like, "No school groups, or no just teenagers," that kind of thing, you will have control over that?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair, we've, we've discussed a number of these in the past, to my knowledge, the ones that we have approved, there have been no issues with. I am a little concerned hearing now that particularly the one on 158 that we heard years or so ago, that there appear to be people permanently living and voting there, I would like for county code enforcement to have a look at that, because I'm hearing an actual complaint here tonight, so.
I agree, that sounded like a specific complaint, this is not something I was aware of at all, I don't know exactly what the address is of the park, so if that information can be supplied to me, I'd be glad to turn it over to code enforcement to inspect.
Is that the one where the clothing is optional?
No. This was, this was the one we heard a couple of years ago, and the point was, for people who were, they really were going to open it up for like, temporary workers, like nurses, construction workers, remember that?
That's not far from there.
Okay, so yeah, it's the one that was not far from you, so I'm assuming that's the same one, because that's the only one out in that area, and I rode by it not too long ago, and thought it actually looked quite nice, so, yeah, I, you know, this just seems like more recreation for Rockingham County, more business.
Audience have the address or the exact location of that RV park, so that I can relay that information?
Gentleman in the back does.
Name of the property is Wilson Properties.
Wilson Properties, okay, and it's on 158?
Right.
Okay.
The lease and the trust stream is Marjorie and Trail.
Okay, okay, thank you.
17 mile boxes.
Okay, I'll report that to code enforcement and have them check it out.
Any further discussion? Yes, Corey Scott, please.
The, I did some research about RV parks, you know, being an RV owner myself, I'm always quite interested in how those things work, one, they are profitable, and that was mentioned, but the other part that I found in the research in a couple of different places, is that it does not have a negative effect on property values, the research shows that they have actually a positive effect, somewhere between 5% and 10% over time increase in property values, so I think people concerned about that, the research doesn't necessarily bear that out.
If we, if we actually do entertain this request, what conditions would the board members recommend?
First of all, the number one condition should be that all water quality issues, or issues related to water in any way, have to conform to state law. or issues related to water in any way have to conform to state law.
It is a condition in the special use permit.
It's already in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
Yes, sir, thank you. A couple of points, and then to Julie's question about the conditions that could go on this request. Being on boards for years and understanding neighborhoods' concerns, there's an acronym for people that have lived in places for a certain amount of time and love where they are. And it's called NIMBY, and that means "Not in My Backyard." And they usually don't want anything in their backyard. They want everything to stay the same as it is when they move there. And to the chair's point, the reason that the county does the regulations and revamp the UDO and the LDO is because things change. And Mr. Martin, I think, would be amicable, and I'm not trying to speak for him, but he's showing 11 trailers. Well, there's nothing on here and nothing that he has said that that's just for now. Later on, I'm going to do 40 more. Well, that can be conditioned, that he can only do so many if he agrees to it. And then if he wanted to do something different, he would have to come back before the boards that would concern that. The duration of time, that can be conditioned. When families go on vacation, I'm just really surprised that there's neighborhoods with no kids. You never see a kid, you never, you know, bikes riding neighborhoods. In my mind, that's not a bad thing. To see people walking in your neighborhood, you've got beautiful homes. People like to walk and look at people's homes. It's a good thing. Rockingham County has something unique in the water that surrounds it and the features that it has. I'm not saying I'm not convinced, I'm on the fence about how to vote on this right now. But I do think that Mr. Martin is open to some conditioning on this site. I really wish that there were, there was a way that you could have an open meeting, and anyone that was concerned about this could come and talk to the developer or whomever it is. In some municipalities, that's required. You have to have a neighborhood meeting and talk with them. And a lot of times, things that you're concerned about, they can address and put into their site plans, and they're gone before it ever gets to this level. So, but we have to, we have to protect the neighborhoods. We have to be open to people wanting to bring new things to the county. And Mr. Martin doesn't live but 10 miles down the road. He's in Summerfield. I think that's where he said he lives. So, it's, that's better than, that's better than an absentee landlord that lives in New York or somewhere. So, I think he's got good intentions. I think he's open to conditions. And I think this board has to stay open to the possibilities that this can bring because the other boards have already said, "We want to bring new recreation and new ideas to Rockingham County for economic development." We can make it so that the people can't live there for 30 days or 60 days or, you know, I don't believe he's going to have mailboxes up here for them to get mail. So, there's a lot of ways that this can, that a lot of your concerns can be addressed, and I hope this board will take everybody's concerns into consideration. And it's a real consideration for the DOT to look at this road. There's problems there before this ever gets there. So, the DOT really needs to take a hard look at maybe a turn lane or something. I don't know what they can do, but there may be a, I don't know if there's any things in the future that shows any of this limb, but that's a concern as well. Thank you.
Future land use map at this point, but certainly there's valid concerns about DOT, and I believe someone had reported it. And we, the board could ask that Mr. Martin seek an evaluation from DOT if some sort of special arrangement would be needed there or not.
Chair recognizes James Fink.
I have one other question about, I know that Ms. Scoble brought up the fact with the septic tank. Is that already fixed or is that proposed?
It's already fixed.
Thank you.
And the septic tank is further away from the water. The main tank is probably a good 100 feet away from the water, but it pumps it up the hill another... I know it's a total of 388 feet. This sand drain is 388 feet from the water.
It's going away from the, away from the lake?
Speaker need to come up and we record this.
So, I understood it went up, it goes up the hill and you're more than...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the tank is probably 100 feet from the water, but it has a pumping station that pumps it even further up the hill, which is a total of 388 feet away from the water.
Okay. That wasn't clear, and I thought, Councilwoman Scoble, does that help out with the city as far as, does that make you feel a little bit better about which direction that Leach Field and the septic tank is? Because that was my, I'm big concerned, and I think that helps a lot of folks out from a water quality standpoint. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, is there a motion before the board?
Mr. Chair, based on the evidence presented, I move to grant the request and specifically find that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a managed recreation area for visitors to Rockingham County. The use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all other applicable regulations as the special use permit and the conditions are all found within the Rockingham County zoning ordinance. And the use or development is a public necessity because Rockingham County is fast becoming a tourist destination because of our excellent recreation areas, natural beauty. This RV park would provide enhanced economic development for Rockingham County and the city of Reedsville. I do so with the additional conditions that Mr. Martin seeks a DOT survey to make sure that the driveway out will be safe for passing, for people that are entering and exiting the site, that the number of lots be limited to his site plan of 11, and that the duration of time be 90 days for any person renting a space there, as we have entertained this before, and that the driveway be at least 20 feet and provide the emergency vehicle access so as not to cause any problems for emergency vehicles coming in and out.
Let's make it a 20-foot access with a 50-foot turnaround.
A 20-foot access with a 50-foot turnaround.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for the property at Reedsville Lake. All those in favor, please signify by raising your...
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Can I ask one question, please? Can Ms. Talbot's motion be amended as to the number of days?
It is, 90 days.
I put 90 days.
I know, but can it be less than that, is what I'm asking? That three months is, in my mind, and we can vote on it that way. I'm not comfortable with that number.
We've approved applications like this before, and we've used 90 days.
Okay.
So, we're comfortable with that.
Yeah. More like if somebody, if a traveling nurse wants to pull up an RV, and this is a common practice, 90 days is typically the timeframe. But it doesn't exceed it so that nobody ends up living and/or voting there.
All right, then, the motion has been made and seconded, and we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? There being no opposition, the application is approved.
I'd like to request a short recess for everyone.
Yeah, at this time, I, like you in the audience, I've sat in those chairs during commissioners' meetings, and they're not the most comfortable things in the world. So, if you'd like to take a couple of minutes to stretch your legs...
Get John back in here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to reconvene now.
And you probably need to tell him we've got a 10 o'clock cutoff, too.
Next case we're going to hear is a special use permit, Please. In the back. Thank you.
This case is 2021-14, submitted by Mr. Jeremy Witt. He has requested a special use permit to allow the placement of a double-wide manufactured home in the residential protected district. The tax pin is here. It's off of Friendship Church Road in the Williamsburg Township. This is the vicinity map. Here is the zoning map of the area. There are a mix of zoning uses here, primarily RP and RA. This parcel looks a bit small, but it has to do with the scale of the map. The parcel is completely developable. It is a non-conforming lot of record, which means that it can be built upon. It has 100 feet of road frontage, and there is plenty of room to meet the minimum building width line for placement of the mobile home. This is simply an aerial that shows the topographical features of the area. And here is the land use plan map. As you see, this one, I remembered to make the big purple circle instead of a little purple circle. I'm very proud of myself. I have to remember to do that more often. Thank you for laughing. I appreciate that. So, this is, again, one of those areas that we're looking at as sort of a rural neighborhood nexus where we would like to see a mix of housing types surrounding sort of a community center where limited commercial may develop in time. This sort of request is pretty routine for a manufactured home in the RP District. He chose to pursue that versus rezoning of the parcel because it fits more with the character of the neighborhood.
A question.
Sure.
Are the surrounding homes stick-built or manufactured? Or is there a mix?
There are a mix. Some of these were existing quite some time ago when some of the original ordinance provisions were put in and when some of the original zoning districts were laid out. This is a common issue in zoning ordinances that zoning districts are established at a certain time. This, I believe, was '88. And over time, characteristics of the neighborhood change or don't change and might not necessarily continually match the zoning characteristics that are part of the plan. Therefore, we have this limited adaptability for the special use permit. So, it would not be out of character for this home to be in this area. And it's the short answer to your question, I believe.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions for Mr. Cochran?
Here is just a statement that, from the land use plan that supports this development.
I noticed the, there's no one signed up to speak for or against this case. The applicant's not here.
Mr. Witt, are you here?
Yes.
Did you just forget to sign in? Hey, there you are, hadn't mine. Okay.
Mr. Witt, could you come forward, please? And if you would, remove your hat, place your left hand on the Bible there, and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matter at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth? So, help you God. All right, thank you. If you would, now, for the record, state your name and address.
Jeremy Witt. 63 Lindsay Street, Reedsville, North Carolina.
Okay, and is there anything special about your application that you want the planning board to know?
Just that it's a family property. My grandfather stays on one side, and my uncle stays on the other side. And the people across the street, they've been there my whole life also. So, I know them very well.
Okay. Is there currently a house on the property, or this is going to be a brand-new one?
It's going to be a brand-new one.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Witt? All right, thank you, sir. Any discussion? Seems pretty straightforward. Is there a motion before the board? I can't find it.
Thumb page 16.
I'm all thumbs up here.
I'll do a motion, sir.
Okay, Corey Scott, please.
Based on the evidence presented, I move to grant the request and specifically find that the use and development is located for the case of 2021-14 is to be operated as to maintain, promote public health and general safety and general welfare. The use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. The use and development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain, enhance the value of the contiguous properties. And the use of the development is a public necessity and fits within the needs of the requister and the family that's located around him. And the use and development will be in harmony with the structures and use of the area by conforming to the general plans for the use land. Land use and development of Rockingham County is embodied in the zoning ordinance and in the Rockingham County Land Use Plan.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve this application. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. This is my agenda. Oh, yeah, here we go. The last case on the docket for this evening. And I want to remind you all that be as brief as you can because, according to the bylaws of this planning board, we have a cutoff time of 10 o'clock. So... So keep that in mind. Mr. Cochran, if you'll present us with case 2021-17, a request to operate a travel trailer park.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, and just so the public and the other folks here know, there's some documents up here from the person, the applicant, Mr. Ferguson, just detailing what his plans for the property are. If you'd like to review those, he's made them available for you. This is case 2021-17. Mr. Ferguson and Mrs. Furio, they have requested to operate a travel trailer RV park and campground, which is allowed as part of the permit. You'll notice the UDO reference tax pin. This is located at 450 Stanley Road in Huntsville. The address, I believe, is actually a Summerfield address, if not Stokestown. Here's the general area of the parcel. This slide is a little bit busy, and I left it this way on purpose. There's a mix of zoning in this area. As you know, this area is under quite a bit of development pressure. This generally fits in with the plans for this area. Mix of residential properties, a little bit of highway commercial, a little bit of neighborhood commercial. And not far to the west is Blueus Lake. This is a topographical map here. This parcel borders Little Hogan's Creek, which does have a bit of a floodplain on this parcel. Of course, developing in the floodplain is prohibited. In addition, there must be a 50-foot setback. The site plan at this point is not completely to scale, but will be setback. I'll let the applicant describe that a little bit further. I wanted to show here, I colored this other parcel a bit pink. This is the parcel that was donated to the county by Duke Energy for Development as a county park. So this parcel is directly adjacent to that parcel.
Does the creek divide the two?
The creek divides the two, correct. You can also see here, we are near another neighborhood nexus with my big purple bubble that I remembered again, and in the G1 growth area. Sort of the same standards for residential and associated uses. Nearby is the higher intensity use designation for G2 and G3. They're not directly related, but they're pretty close together there, so that should be taken into consideration. Again, the economic development goals of the plan, current land use plan support this. These are the exact same citations that I made for case 2021-13. The goals here are very similar. That's my last line. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
This is Julie Talber.
Looking at the map, can you go back to the map with the road names on them? So Shelton Road is what goes down to the Blues Creek, like Carolina Marina, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if that's the, pretty much the main recreation area plus the proposed park, is that correct? Okay. All right, those are my questions.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran? Thank you, Lynn.
Sure. I'll leave this map up.
Ferguson here. Would you please come forward, sir? Please swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matter at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Okay, and if you would, please recite your name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Louis Ferguson. My address is, my home address is 442 Stanley Road. The proposed park, RV park, is at 450 Stanley Road.
That you'd like the planning board to know.
Do you have my PowerPoint up? Lynn, do you have the PowerPoint up?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Let me hook up your PowerPoint.
Just a second. I'll start off by prefacing that I've lived on this property for 36 years. Moved on it when I was five. I recently purchased it a year ago. This purchase has been in the plans for a few years, but recently made all the connections happen a year ago.
I was out there yesterday while he's getting that up. Are you the one that's building a house?
Yes, sir. I'm remodeling a house and adding addition to it.
Yeah, okay, I was at the right place then. And the property that you want to, the application to prove for is up in the back, up on the top of the hill?
Yes, sir, the driveways join, and it goes all the way back to the back.
To advance the slides, you just go right and left.
So I'm going to make as brief as I can, from the interest of time. It's getting a little late. Interested in doing a family-friendly campground, suitable for all RVs and travel trailers, 30 to 50 amp service hookups with water, cable, and septic. All sites will have personal fire pits with water hydrants to prevent any kind of issues there. Covered shelters with front porches will be built for our premium sites. There will be different grades of sites along the campground. And our premium sites will be completely covered with covered front porches, and also have three-quarters to an acre of privacy. Most of what's, campgrounds are going in now are 15, 20, 30 feet apart. These are three-quarters of an acre to an acre. We're not looking to get rich. We're looking to offer a good camping experience for the community that will help Rockingham County, bring money to Rockingham County, and also add to our neighborhood. All right? In the last five years, we've done a little research. So in the last five years, in the camping industry has seen a boom. However, they have a terrible shortage of campsites. The KOA and the National Association of RV Parks and Campgrounds found that they're going to need at least 53,000 campgrounds in the United States, campsites, excuse me, not campgrounds, 53,000 campsites in the United States in the near future to meet the demand over the past five years. Expansion is expected to continue through 2021 and beyond. The latest statistics available that I was able to find states that $166 billion of camping and RV-related revenue entered into the economy just from camping and RV sales and activity. Not to mention the complete overall recreation activity sitting at $886 billion in 2018. Last year, there were 94.5 million camping households in the United States. 2.4 million new camper families was expected last year. 10 million, 10.1 million is actually what was recorded according to North American Camping Resort information. In 2020, first-time campers were significantly more likely to come from higher-end households, higher-income households, which obviously is going to lend them to have more expendable income to spend in the communities, in the stores, at the Carolina Marina, restaurants, and so forth. This is just a graph that we pulled out from North American Camping Report by KOA. They put it out every year, this is 2020's, and it shows, this just briefly shows the growth in the camping industry by income. The next slide I have shows North Carolina, I mean, North American Camping Report again, and it shows the growth, exponential growth. You can see at the last, between 2014 and 2019, the next column is 2014 to 2020, and you can see the huge growth there. Part of that's attributed to the coronavirus, people being nervous going out and going to condos, motels, homes with their own units, with their own equipment. They can sanitize it, they feel safer, they feel cleaner, which is what everything says added to the boom. This is a slide that represents the activities that, again, by North American Camping Report that lists out activities that campers generally like to do in the area. 18 of the 22 activities listed on this slide are within 30 minutes of the proposed campground, with five or six being right next door in the approved Blues Park. Campground rules and regulations, there will be, I have provided you guys with copies of the rules. If anybody would like one, they're here because I didn't have time to put everything on the slide and read them all out to you. But the rules will be strictly enforced. There will be certain rules that are scheduled for immediate expulsion. One of those being any reason that the police have been called due to someone's behavior, drug activity, harassment of the neighbors. Littering is going to be a major one, trespassing. All property lines are going to be clearly marked. All lines are going to be clearly marked because everybody's going to sign, and in the rules, they're going to sign that they adhere to these rules. If they don't, they're going to be removed from the campground. The first instance of trespassing from a camper onto a neighboring property or anybody around, they're going to be removed from the park. I take this serious. I've lived there for 31 years, 36 years. I've never wanted people walking around my property. I understand why people are nervous that people are going to be on their property. We are going to and are willing to make nearly any concession to ensure that our people do not travel on the neighboring properties, whether that be privacy fencing, whether it be privacy screening and plants and landscaping. So that is first and foremost. Possible concerns that I've come in contact with, talking with people in the neighborhood and folks that have come to me and wanted to know more about this, is number one, the trespassing, number two, is going to be unattended fires. People, that's going to be another one that's immediate expulsion for any reason. If you're off of your campsite and your fires are going for any reason, you're gone. I don't want my place burned up either. I live there, I've lived there all my life. My parents lived there, and all my neighbors live there. So every effort will be made to make sure that the fires will be burnt in accordance with county regulations and burn bans. As far as water and sewer, sewer, because of my proximity to the creek, we're going to have solid stations where the dump station's into that and pumps offside septic and pumps the liquid up the hill far away from the creek, so that never becomes a problem. And security, I happen to live at 442, so everybody that comes through into this park is coming right by my driveway. There will be video surveillance coming and going, and there will be a gated entrance. And tent camping, I have made provisions on my site for tent camping. However, tent camping is only intended to be used for civic groups, for Boy Scouts, things like that. Youth groups, church wants to come and camp, and that'll be free of charge for the community. It will not be camping tent options for the individual. It'll only be campers and RVs for the individual. Civic groups and light groups is what that's for. I got a copy of the campground map. The two arrows that you see on the campground map are the starting and the forever ending point for the campground. Right now, I have set up about 16 sites. Duke Power has not got back with me, and here's my determinant factor on how many sites I'm going to get started in there with. Duke Power is going to install the power around the place for free with expected usage. So they've got to do their, they're doing their calculation to find out how many sites that it's going to be. They're telling me between 16 and 20. They haven't got it nailed down exactly for them to install the power free around the development, saving me a lot of money. And then I included some pictures. I have one campsite that's set up. What led me into this is I got, I own a business, and in doing, operating my business, I had an opportunity to do some work for a camper. I ended up with a camper, I did some camping, and we absolutely loved it. There's a lot of things about camping that we didn't like. We didn't like the proximity of the campers to each other. We didn't like feeling like we were in a trailer park. We wanted the privacy. We wanted to feel like we were camping. So this is why we decided to go ahead and make this purchase final for this, set up the campsites, as you see here, with the fire pits, with the water features, I mean, with the water hydrants, and all the features that you see. Each individual campsite, this is how it will be set up with not another campsite inside of it. So that is the end of my presentation.
Questions?
I've got a question, too. Mr. Ferguson, you talked about the North American Camping Report that is produced by KOA. Do you have any plans to be sanctioned or partner or be an affiliate of any of the other camping, or any camping sanctioning body that sets good standards? And that's where I'm going with this.
Well, we're going to follow the standards set forth by the county and honestly, the neighborhood. This is intended to be an attribute to the neighborhood. A lot of the rules and a lot of the things that I have derived and I have put into this come directly from my neighbors and the people that have talked to me about it that have expressed these concerns with me. I don't have any plans, and I haven't looked into being an affiliate with KOA or anybody like that. Haven't, just haven't gotten that far into it at this point.
And that was my only question.
Any other questions? Chair recognizes Corey Scott.
So in the previous discussion, which I'm sure you heard, there was discussion about long, how long would you plan on allowing people to stay in the campground?
I haven't determined a set length. It will not be, and in the rules that I have provided, it clearly states that it is not a permanent residence, that people will not be setting up mailboxes and leaving mail there, that it is going to be only for recreation. This is not accommodations, this is recreation. So that's, whatever guidelines that you guys feel, I'm not planning on having anybody stay in there over a couple of weeks. But, you know, until you start setting up and people come in and be like, oh, well, I'm a similar situation. Traveling nurses, I don't want to have to turn them away. There's, Duke Power's, the steam station's right across the lake. They often have welders in, out of town, that are similar situations that sit in, and they work for a month, two months at a time. I would like to be able to entertain those guys. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Standard time limit for these things is 90 days. Are you comfortable with that?
Perfectly.
Okay. Any other questions for?
I had a question. That was one of my questions, is if we conditioned it to 90 days, would you be fine with that?
Absolutely.
Also, if we conditioned the number, are you fine with that?
The number of campsites?
The number of campsites that you're indicating up to 20?
Absolutely. Yeah, and like I said, I don't have that firm number yet. That's in the hands of Duke Power to run their calculations and tell me how many I have to have in order to.
But for our purposes, for tonight, we've got to put some kind of limit on it, so.
Whatever you determine you need a limit at that, best I know of right now, 16 to 20 as of right now. So that would be perfectly.
Your site plan, can you go back to it? That showed the little campers there.
Yes, sir. And again, this is a very preliminary site.
I'm not seeing it here.
I'm on it here.
Oh, I need to fix you up, hold on.
Fix it.
After the entrance, is it one-way traffic after the entrance?
The entrance, it is one-way. It is going to be, so I'm going to have a 30-foot entrance that's going to be two-way for about 100 yards to get past the residential.
To the top of the hill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's one-way from there?
Yes, sir. And it's directional according to the arrows that you see. So yes, sir, it will be one-way.
Okay, that only requires a 12-foot driveway, but somewhere in here, you're going to have to incorporate a 50-foot turnaround for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, that's not a problem. This road will actually be 20-foot wide. The one-way will actually be 20-foot wide. The two-way will be 30-foot wide. So, but this is a continual loop. So if I need to incorporate any other turnarounds, any other places, that's fine. This is not, like I said, this is preliminary, and I'm going to be doing the construction of it, so it will absolutely have my hands.
Succeed the minimum required, so you're good there. All right, thank you.
Let her go first.
Oh, you have a question? Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
I was just wondering, you said that Duke Power, right now, they're saying maybe 16? I'm wondering if 20 would limit you? And if they came back and said, we got to have 21, then would he have to come back and start over again? So maybe we should limit it to like 25? Because he certainly has the, looks like he has the space. space.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Would that be, would that be, would that be help you, sir?
Yes, ma'am, very possibly. Like I said, I'm new to this, so I don't know exactly what to expect yet, but from what he told me, so yes, that should cover me fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair also had an additional question.
Chair recognizes Matt Cardwell.
Approximately, how long do you think your loop is going to be?
From my best guess, about two miles.
Okay, that was one of my concerns as a firefighter. When we try to locate, when we called out, we try to locate these sites or any address, the big problem's been sometimes finding them. Would you be fine if we get dished and you know, some of these are pretty good ways off your path to signage for the unit number?
There will absolutely be reflective.
Okay, because that'll help emergency personnel find these a lot better. Also, I forgot who it was earlier alluded to the turnarounds. If we, you know, fire or EMS did have to turn around, let's say we missed it, we need somewhere that you can turn around and go back if you need to, not do the whole two miles.
Absolutely, and we could incorporate several of those along the way. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Let's see, we've got one, two, three. There's three people objecting to this. Joseph and Kathy Brown, Jay Bailey and Ken Layfield. Do you all have basically the same objection?
Pretty much the same as the previous group.
All right, in the interest of time, could we get one of you people to speak for the rest of you? Would you all agree to that?
I do have one separate point that they didn't bring up before.
Then come up, please. In fact, why don't all of you just come up and we'll swear you all in at once. All right, if you'd just put your left hand on the Bible there and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay. Ma'am, would you like to go first?
Okay. My name's Kathy Brown. I live in Blues Landing off of Ellisboro Road. My biggest concern about this is it's already been brought up, they plan on using Blues Lake as their recreation, but there are RVs coming down Ellisboro Road and then Stanley Road, which is even smaller, are these, are they going to be pulling boats? You know, our boats just aren't big enough for that. As far as I know, the marina rents out a handful of boats, so 16 sites.
See, two, aren't they?
Yeah. So how are, how are they going to access the marina for part of their recreation and how is it going to impact the traffic on Ellisboro Road?
Well, I don't think it would impact it any more than if there was a sudden surge in the interest of the public in boating and they all wanted to haul their boats to Blues Creek Lake.
I'm talking about the campers with the boats on the back of them coming down Ellisboro Road.
I think that's, I don't know if I could speculate on that and that's what it would be, speculation.
Yeah. Well, that's my concern is the traffic.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Brown?
I have a question. Ms. Brown, how long have you lived on Stanley Road?
I don't live on Stanley Road. I live in Blues Landing right off of Ellisboro Road and we've had several backups where the marina is backed up with people going in there with boats and it has backed up on Ellisboro Road and it's just not a very big road and it's for safety reasons, it's not a good road for all that traffic.
And how long have you lived there?
A year and a half.
A year and a half.
Yes, it's like access.
Any other questions for Ms. Brown?
No questions.
All right, thank you. And sir, would you come up, please? And for the record, would you state your name and address?
My name's Ken Layfield. I live at 259 Yard Arm Court in Stokesdale, Blues Landing Community. Just, Ms. Brown covered a lot of, some of the key points there, just to add to looking at, I would suggest that the developers contact NCDOT and really look at the intersection of Ellisboro Road and Stanley Road because of the turning radius, regardless you're pulling a boat or not, depending on the length of RV, they're going to be off on the side of the road there, turning in. It's, there really needs to be a turn lane there for that kind of traffic. My second point is that presumed, is it presumed that the Rockingham County Parks and Recreation will allow direct access from the campground over to the park? Will that essentially be an extension of the recreational park?
There isn't a Rockingham County Parks and Recreation.
No, at this point.
Developing, I know it's a proposed park to be there right on the corner. If you look at, if you bring up that other screen, it shows where it's proposed.
Yeah, at this point, I don't believe that the development of the park has any connection to this at all.
Completely separate, okay. Third point is that special use permit, it's obvious, they've done a very good job with the UDO land use policies and the special use permit requirements, but it goes back to, I think we've heard a lot tonight about the previous discussions on the trailer parks, is how is that managed in terms of people not staying there longer than 90 days? We heard earlier where there was some creep on a park out on 158 that ended up being, having mailboxes, people living there a longer time. How's that managed? Do you have, Lynn, you and I spoke the other day briefly on some topics, does Rockingham County have the resources to check on that? Not to say that it's going to happen, just as an additional safety measure.
Sure, that's a valid concern. When it comes to a quasi-judicial permit like this, we have to look at the black and white of what the special use permit says first. The black and white of the permit says spaces shall be rented by the day and it doesn't go any further than that. Therefore, it kind of falls on the board to consider if there are concerns of people staying too long, can they request a reasonable condition for a maximum length of stay? And that's sort of how we get around to that. And then after that point, it becomes a code enforcement issue that's complaint-driven as Mrs. Hayworth mentioned before. If, and that's countywide for any kind of development. It's simply the way local government is structured. So we sort of act on faith of the person who's developing, but we also can put some standards on and restrictions that are reasonable. And then if we receive complaints, of course, we go investigate.
Even the city of Reedsville, you heard the last case, I'm sure, complaining about the length of time of stay. Here's the brochure from the city of Reedsville that says you can rent spaces up there by the month. So, you know, one month, two consecutive months, three consecutive months, their own literature doesn't give a time limit.
Well, we appreciate.
We like to work with the figure 90 days.
Right, that's good. I think that's based on what Ms. Talbot was talking about earlier about traveling nurses and welders working over at the plant too. I think that's fair.
Okay. And I think it's important to point out too, that one thing that the board and staff have to avoid is what is called arbitrary or compresious decisions or conditions. And by setting this sort of 90-day standard, it sets a precedent and it sort of levels the playing field for everyone and it doesn't make an exception. That way we avoid sort of just saying, oh, well, this one can be 60 days and that one can be 180, but if we kind of do a 90-day.
And of course, as the old adage goes, the best alarm system you can have is nosy neighbors. Well, the best code enforcement you can have is nosy neighbors and, you know, we would, we hope that all citizens in Rockingham County, when they see these code violations, now you're not supposed to know the code like the code enforcement officers, but if you see things that don't look right, please call, call the county because they will send an officer out. Am I correct? They send an officer right out and these guys, they know exactly what they're doing and they do a fabulous job. So they're there to protect the homeowners and residents of Rockingham County so that they're, they are your resource.
Well, in closing, we heard earlier about concerns about property values. We all encourage, we're looking for additional tax revenue in this county, there's no doubt about it, we need that, we need to track tourism. But I just want to share, where we live in Blues Landing Community, all the homeowners there, we pay probably any, well, not probably, we pay between $625,000 and $675,000 a year in property taxes as a community. And as an individual owner there of property, I'm, we can't help, when you hear the word RV park, campground, you can't help but to raise concerns, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, like you had no idea that camping, from this information we received tonight, has grown so exponentially. I don't do camping myself. I often tell my wife that my idea of camping is going to a hotel that doesn't have room service.
Yeah. My wife and I, we prefer cabins, you know, like nice cabins.
We've done that before. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, I noticed quite a few people that have signed up to speak in favor of this. Would you all, do you know each other? Would you like to select a person to come up and talk to us?
I have nothing more to add, second time. I'm DJ Key, cross me off, thank you.
Nancy Bowling, would you like?
I have, we actually live right next door to Mr. Ferguson here.
If you're going to speak, if you're going to speak at all, you have to come up here.
Hi, I'm his new neighbor. I'm not met any of y'all.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then please tell us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bowling. I live at 460 Stanley Road, right beside Mr. Ferguson. If, in my opinion, if it has to do with property taxes, I think mine would probably be the one that would be worrisome because I'm right next door and I don't have a worry. They have thought this out, they have planned this out, they've spent a lot of hours thinking about this and to be honest with you, I kind of look forward to it. So that's all I really wanted to say. I'm not, I am a retired nurse and I have friends that travel and it would be awesome for them to be able to park their camper there and work at numerous hospitals around here, but I think they've run, it's really a well-planned out thing here.
Okay.
That's all I want to say.
Okay.
Thanks.
Does that sentiment pretty much cover the rest of the people that are in favor of Okay. Then any discussion amongst the members here? If not, can we have a motion, please? Sir?
I'm on the list, Patrick Crayton.
Okay.
Just a brief concern.
Okay, if you would. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matter at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, then for the record, please tell us your name and address.
I'm Patrick Crayton. I reside at 346 Stanley Road with my wife and three children. We are the second largest land mass that is next to Lewis. Lewis has been a good neighbor. My, probably my primary concern really comes down to, I do a fair amount of shooting and that backs up to Ferguson's land and it's of course with the knowledge of everyone around and it's into a solid backstop, but I guess my concern is that the, anyone that would want to have an RV camp there had better like the sound of gunfire and the smell of freedom because there is plenty of that happens in my backyard. And so Lewis and I have discussed this and talked about it even earlier today and he has assured me that there is not going to be any attempt to curtail that and I also don't want to tell other people what they can or can't do with their own land, but.
Between the two of you, do you feel like it worked out the safety concerns at least?
That's well in hand. There is an embankment that everyone would go into that would keep the potential camper safe, but it is in that direction, although the berm goes up a solid 60 to 80 feet, so there's no concern on that front. But again, the concern in some ways is noise on their part and then there's also noise on my part as a resident back there. We live quite well tucked back into the woods ourselves, so we would want to ensure that there was not an inordinate amount of noise.
You don't plan on shooting at anybody, do you?
Julie.
Unless the.
I mean, I'm just envisioning.
He's an 80-foot berm, he's a responsible gun owner.
DOJ concealed carry class.
I know nothing about this, so I'm like.
Yes, I teach the NC DOJ concealed carry class, so I do have other people that come and shoot on the property in the range portion of that, but that's, no.
Juries of living in the county. You can shoot.
Any questions for Mr. Craven? Mr. Henderson?
You just mentioned you conduct a concealed carry class on your site.
It is sometimes, the range portion is sometimes held on my site.
Okay, so in addition, just personal shooting, it's.
Yes, sir.
Occasional additional shooting?
Occasional and it's very small classes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Unarmed, of course.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion? No, I got it.
It's the hour.
It's the hour. Based on the evidence presented, I move to grant the request and specifically find that the use and development is located, designed and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the general health, safety and welfare. The use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of the ordinance with all of the other applicable regulations, and that includes the neighbors, that the use or development is located, designed and proposed to be operated as to maintain or enhance the value of the contiguous property and the use or development will be in harmony with the structures and uses in the areas by conforming to the general plans of the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied by the zoning ordinance and the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. In addition, I recommend that the following conditions be adopted in this motion. Number one, that no stay exceeds 90 days, that there are no more than 25 individual campsites, that the, there, the turnaround signs, there be numerous turnaround signs and placards be prominently displayed for each campsite so as to aid any emergency vehicles and that there be at least one 50-foot turnaround to accommodate emergency vehicles. Second.
Motion has been made in second to approve the application with conditions. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the permit is approved. Before we continue with our agenda, I just want to thank everybody that stayed for your patience. These meetings don't usually last this long, but we're glad that you appeared with us. And now we'll consider all business. And it looks like minutes from May 10th and June 14th. Still underway, so we'll just table that until our next meeting. And under new business.
We're still having a meeting, folks.
Our meeting is still going on here. If you would, please quiet on or visit outside. You're welcome to stay if you like, but we're just doing housekeeping here. You're welcome to stay if you like, but we're just doing housekeeping here.
Thank you all.
So we're going to table the minutes until the August 9th meeting, approval of the minutes, that is.
I have an unnamed little helper helping me work on those, but this helper is new to that process, and they're, our minutes are extensive because we have to watch the video, we have to compare speech, we have to do all those things, and maybe being a party of one, there, I'm sorry. I apologize.
We understand, these are difficult times. As far as the UDO update and the 160D adoption...
Just a real quick update, I wanted to make sure everyone knew that...
The UDO is scheduled to be approved a week from today at the commissioners' meeting.
The final UDO is scheduled for adoption. 160D has already been adopted by ordinance as of June 21st, so as of July 1, well, as of June 21st.
And actually, 160D became the law in effect as of January 1, so...
Whether, well, it was July 1, actually, whether we liked it or not. But the commissioners wanted to stay ahead of the game, so we prepared a memo and a statement and worked with John and some folks at PGRC to make sure we stayed above board and beat the deadline.
Okay. And lastly, would anybody like...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Let me finish asking. Second, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, none, we're adjourned.